It's like Memorial Street. Station Tree, Constitution, and the line I know was all about.
So it did get put there.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there's a separate one, actually. There's something in New York that's about Memorial Street.
We have one of those places though. I guess I could stay with me for time. Should I take a question? You put it in.
We got it.
Good evening. Hey, it's not already.
Seven, three, seven, three, eleven. Hello. Um, I need to search.
I'm coming. Coming. I have a, I left it.
Don't dance because I don't have the. Does I have the phone?
Yes.
Yes, you love that one too. Oh, these lines are, oh, you can set over.
Why?
Because I thought it was a phone company bill.
Did you get promoted?
That's all right. Let's see if all could all be.
Mine is bad.
It doesn't matter. Mary. Boy, that, that was kind of over here. Tamina.
Is she?
Yes. Not my, my choice. That's why he said, you know, it's only, it's going to be quick meetings and everything. Yes, it is.
I'm glad you're there.
You know how to move, right?
Hello.
Steve. Hello. Who's this? Hey Gavin, I'll give you the number for the house. Hey Gavin, can we talk tomorrow?
We're back here. This is what I am. I didn't do any of this. I've been hard checking.
They just made us sign.
Too busy. I don't want it out here. I know, is it, I don't either. I definitely don't want to be in this stuff. Oh, my goodness, right after. No names, I do. No name.
No name.
Are you going to call me? Um, no name.
Assistant branch manager.
No name. She said no name, so that's fine.
You got the lock on your office. That's your fire.
No. No, sir. I just need to get this one.
Oh, sir. Nick, sir. You're a bit busy, Josh. You have a lot of work to do. You can fuck with us.
Well, there's money for.
Yeah. I don't know. Yeah, that's right. It's a good workout.
I'll have you do some.
Okay. She gets her play.
Excuse me.
I have a standing, standing lap. She says, don't miss it. That's so funny.
It's actually cool, isn't it?
Uh, it's just.
Six.
Yeah, I wanted to have a bunch of.
Don't be requiring today.
What's that?
Are requiring today.
I have no interest in being up there. Let me tell you. I bet you it's too close. We're not here to say the same thing.
We feel the same way.
I always tell the time. My first time up here is when they had the lifestyle club and the place was just packed. So scared of that. My first meeting, I sat down for all that and I mean, the whole place was just full and my preacher was standing right there, just firing a birch stone right at me. That's a little preacher, I always had to back row for a reason. It was a place yesterday. At the time, you've got a lot of different times to get past that. I wish you'd been here for that one.
Awesome. That's how that went. That you replaced me because I said that.
Yeah. So that's, that's, and that's right from this, this, uh, this trail thing and this greenway thing that's going on, right? Basically, right, that's, that's that time. That's why it kind of fools you that you don't remember. You're just doing this like six meetings. That's one.
Oh, okay. That makes sense. I'm wondering.
Yes. It's time.
Okay, we're going to call it to the July 16th at 6:00 PM meeting. We will all stand. The invocation, please. No, yes, the invocation. No, I called a order, don't I? Yeah. I just did that. Would you all please forgive me? Mr. Frazier, the invocation.
Our dear heavenly Father, please bless us this evening as we gather here to conduct the city's business. And for us to remember that it's not about us, it's about our citizens and the community here, that we can do the best that we can for them with what we're provided. Please guide and direct us in this method, in manners of the city, keep his business. Thank you.
Amen. And by allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may proceed. Diana, call the roll, please. Mr. Edelman?
Here.
Mr. Bromley?
Here.
Mr. Frazier?
Here.
Mr. Reese?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
We had an executive meeting last week, correct? Thank you. Just want to let the public know. Adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as prepared?
Motion is not prepared.
Any questions? Call the roll. Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bromley?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of June 18th of 2013 as submitted or correctly placed on file?
I will make that motion.
Keith will, is there a second?
Second.
Go on, questions? Call the roll. Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Bromley?
Yes.
Been award for the 2013 paving. Motion to award the 2013 paving contract to?
Russell Steiner.
Thank you. In amount not to exceed.
I believe that Randy was supposed to be higher.
Yes. I was kind of like, is it 217, 852, 75?
It's a motion.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All right. I want to keep. Questions or comments?
I'm just curious though, successful bidder last year didn't bid this year.
I discussed with Diana last year.
Oh, okay. I let me hit across.
It's across the year before.
Okay.
We had Russell Standard because they were already in town and did it.
Okay. It all runs together, but they still did the bid. It surprises me.
They were actually 15 minutes late.
Okay, so there was a reason for that.
Okay, any other comments?
Good, honest investigative work.
Call the roll. Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bromley?
Yes.
Operation reports, is there a motion to accept the operational report of the inspector, finance? Hi Randy. I'm going to, I'm going to stop just for a second. Wait. Randy, we just went on the paving. And Mr. Bromley said that we will wait and ask you any questions until the end. I'm just joking. Is there anything, Randy, that you'd like to say regarding the paving? There was, really wasn't any question, Jake.
They voted to pass Russell Standard at 217.
Very good. That's the, the overall bid that you're seeing included all of the options. But I would take based on council's comments regarding Main Street, but I would move that around a little bit, maybe Second Street or, I hate to identify which ones, but if we have the cash, we would like to be able to take care of a couple of those bad spots. In addition, numbers tickle pink with, everything came in according to the mayor's favor. Russell Standard is very well established. The other one, I would have been worried about to work with them a dozen times before. So, that's great.
Wonderful. Okay, Randy.
Yes, Randy, did you say this is all the options or is this just the seven?
If you look at the, if you look at the original, the bar nut column?
Yes.
The 170, I believe, is the number that you're looking at.
Right.
That is what we absolutely wanted to make sure that we get.
Those were the highlighted blue ones.
That was the base bid.
Uh huh.
Okay, the additional ones were all of the options will be at hooky. So, we're looking pretty good there on the numbers.
So in other words, all the items that we wanted to get paid, we can do that 217 and including the options.
Including every option that you had on the sheet there.
Fantastic.
Yeah. Really thank you very much for all you've done. Thank you.
Thanks for your work on that.
I apologize for, for being here ready to take that in.
That's okay.
We need a hard engine in there.
You're okay.
Yeah, that's right. All righty, um, back to the building inspector, finance, fire, police, public works, and treasure for the month of June 2013.
I'll make that one to do this up.
Um, go ahead and bring that to my attention. I'm sorry for the dawn, you've made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
Okay, Keith, we'll go through this. Don't you suspect your question or comments? If not, finance director's report.
Come on, man. I'd just like to comment that says that the directors are doing a real good job keeping on spending. That's very meaningful.
And a nice new year budget report.
Yeah.
Very nice.
Nicely done.
All right, fire department?
I just have a question, comment from Chief since he's here.
Chief?
Hello?
Fire.
Sorry. Just curious, you had an automatic fire alarm at 8:15 Rockwood, and I'm not sure which one of those two places that is, but that's where that has a hydrant that sits way down.
That's 819.
I'm getting to my point now, that often has a car sitting near it. So I just was curious what you found when you arrived that day. And you, is that hydrant of a concern?
The hydrant isn't service, that's the only 819 as far as one.
Okay, this is.
The one bad, one is 815 Rockwood. As far as car parking, the last alarm I went to, it was pretty much clear there was no parking in the front. Are you saying there's a kind of a chronic problem or?
No, the hydrant just sits way down in.
Yeah, it is down in.
Okay. It's no issue for you?
Yeah, I would like to have a higher. It's operation or.
Thank you.
Had to be 20 cars, matter of fact. Did have to use it.
Hey Chief, it's important to point out that Randy brings us movies to watch. What do we get out of the fire department?
He didn't hear you. He saved again.
I heard something about movies. Yeah, Randy brings us movies to watch. What do we get out of the fire department?
Uh, backup camera? I'm telling movies for you now.
Okay, any other comments? On to the public works. Next, which of please? Anything? Not hearing anything. How about the treasures? All right, Diana, call the roll. Mr. Bromley?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
And we'll step back just a moment to, um, public participation and the law files to, public participation to the time line limit of five minutes, 30 minutes total. All right, not moving on. Thank you, Mr. Edelman. Bring that to my attention. Minutes on boards and committees, is there a motion to accept the place from file of minutes of the housing authority of 521? The redevelopment authority of 63? Safety committee of 625? And the leisure service of June 6?
Service of commission.
June 13th? Did I say service?
No.
A commission. And the 20th?
I'll make a motion. Second.
And the 27th, I'm sorry, and the 27th. So there's Keith, and there's Jay. All right, we'll go down through them. The housing authority?
Yeah, I have no objection on that. Second page, last paragraph, I just wanted to let you know that they themselves have stipulations about the additional parking areas that they were going to leave open for Farmer's Market. And I just wanted to make sure that there's no guarantee that there's going to be too open. If they need to take a part, they're going to park for them. So, which is fine. As I understand it, and I may have it incorrectly, there's two or three empty spaces depending on how many tenants and how many vehicles are allowed to have, so it shouldn't work out. Unless someone moves in, I guess, would be where they run out of spaces.
That's right. That's what I'm saying, they're not guaranteeing it.
Seems to be working well on what I saw and heard.
The other thing was on the page three, second paragraph, I think bar, including the last sentence. This is public comment here. There was another pair of, the city emptying the garbage and stuff like that. I don't believe the city empties the garbage, I believe the city. So, uh, so I just wanted that clarified with the chairman and stuff there, that it is not the city's responsibility to empty that trash out. It was, it's all, I think there's.
I could pass it on before you fill in.
It's, they're implying, and I don't, I think.
Yeah, I was, I wasn't in attendance at that meeting, but I'll pass it on.
The refuse fallers only in town Tuesday and Wednesday, so the problems we're having with the heightened activities. It's full, it's Friday, Saturday.
It's full by the time they have, they have two.
Okay. And I, and I didn't, you know, you know, it kind of implied that possibly our new parks make this person, this founder's responsibility. I don't believe it does. So, maybe we need to put the activities, as Diana's saying, to do a bit of way or else extra susceptible or something.
Mrs. George, can we take care of it?
I'll be the manager.
There, there already is additional pants out, placed out, shiny.
Yeah, this one.
Okay, moving on to the redevelopment. Comments, questions? Safety committee meeting. The leisure service commission for June 6? No? Um, June 13th? 20th? And 27th? Not the, all right. Call the roll. Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bromley?
Yes.
Motion to ratify the bill.
Yes. Just want to mention something about the safety committee in May. We had the audit from the Department of Labor and Industry, and it's called the audit to count some things as far as flow with the agenda and whatnot, some other issues. That's all we've taken care of. We'll let it today that we are 100% in compliance and in the good grace of the Department of Labor and Industry.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chief. All right, bill listings. Is there a motion to ratify the bill listing warrants dated 6/19 of 121, 571, 49 of 627 of 60,361 of July 2nd of 413, 718, 18 cents and 711 of 50,401, 16 cents?
I should do ratify.
Is there a second?
I'll start.
We'll go through them. 619, questions or comments?
This is not 619.
That's okay. 627. All right, 72. Got them? And 711?
711, page three, I see we had a payment feature. Is that some kind of final payment or final payment or?
It's a final payment.
Final payment.
So now we're at page what again?
3.
I'm going to have to.
I like the outside of that.
Just want to check.
9246.
That's the last one. That's hard. All right, okay. We're good? Call the roll. Mr. Bromley?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Questions or comments on that?
Question, Rich. The thought process behind this, I mean, they, like, this seems to kind of handcuff ourselves to a development just outside the city. And just kind of why, I guess, I mean, I was told we were required to pass it, so I just, if you had some insight as to why, I don't.
The theory is, to the extent the city goes outside the boundaries, we would be under the jurisdiction of the PUC. The PUC has indicated they would entertain a waiver of that jurisdiction provided we undertake these terms.
Okay, so we want to, going forward, outside the city, whatever we do would be under the PUC?
Correct. We apply for a certificate of power of convenience.
That answers everything. Thank you.
Call the roll. Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Bromley?
Yes.
Resolution on recreation grant closeout, is there a motion to adopt the resolution number five of 2013?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll start.
Miss, Mr. posting, please.
Resolution number five of 2013, resolution of the city council of the city of Titusville approving and accepting the comprehensive recreation plan prepared for the city of Titusville in closing out community conservation partnerships grant project BRC DAG 15104.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Everyone's concerns been satisfied? I don't have any comment, I just, there were some questions last week and.
Yes.
Your email didn't, it said it was helpful, but I didn't know which way it led you, so looking forward to hearing that.
Yeah, I, uh, obviously, we all have our concern integrity in our votes and stuff like that, and I don't like voting for something when I don't have all the facts. And, uh, so graciously, Larry, our city manager, found the information that I needed, which for a while, I believe, was misplaced or whatever like that. So that came forth. It provided me a means of see whether the main bullet was, or ticked off in the report. I can say that we've had discussion, and some of us may not feel that the report is showing what we wanted or evaluated some of the areas that we wished to have. But I look at the thing here, the report does have some information, there are some areas which I consider maybe minimal, they could have gone into a little more detail. However, it is what it is. And if anything at all, the process of doing this brought us together because there was disparity among organizations and groups and stuff that were working together. So I look at this as, this became a tool that, that was able to be negotiated amongst the parties that we have something today. And so I think there is still some information in this report that we can include and, and still learn from. However, we are past that point now with the new commission, and so I'm satisfied.
I got a chance to review the R and P for lack of a longer phrase, but, and, but I couldn't go back in my memory, and I thought the people of the ad hoc committee and then people of research could say if they kind of met that criteria.
See, this took place before my seat, and I wanted to make sure that I was going properly.
Mr. Edelman, Mr. Bromley? I'll add in one, in just a second. No? Okay. And I did not see the grant application. Did anyone see that? I copied that. And that right there goes to show, or goes to show back where we were talking about, let's just say, other entities applying for grants on behalf of the city, and we don't happen to see those grants. This is very reason why I have concerns of us not getting copies, of getting copied on what they're applying for, because I never saw the grant application. Still, I'm going back to what I said earlier. I phoned Mr. Good today because I read the paper and I can't, I don't remember exactly what it said, but it said something about that a city official didn't call him regarding any concerns, and so I contacted him again. I did call him, and he didn't return my phone call. I really think Mr. Good is, he's, he did his best. I did tell him, I felt that the way, the way he proceeded was wrong, he should have contacted the board, that was part of the agreement. And he, and all I said to him today is, make sure if you're interfaced with this again, don't, make sure you talk with the, every individual involved, every entity involved, whatever. Because I feel that a report is not complete when you didn't get all the information from everyone. And so my opinion is a biased report. However, um, I know last week we commented, a few commented about the commission, the committee, we do have an awesome commission there, and I'm looking forward from today on, and I'm just.
I'll second it.
Diana?
Council bill number four of 2013, ordinance number 3216. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, to provide that no future connection shall be permitted to the city of Titusville's water system, except within the boundaries of the city of Titusville, and to provide further that existing water customers located outside the city's boundaries shall be charged the same rates and shall be provided service on the same terms as customers within the city limits.
Thank you. Questions or comments on that?
This question, Rich, is the thought process behind this, I mean, they, like, this seems that we kinda handcuff ourselves for any development just outside the city, and just kinda why, I guess, I mean, I was told we were required to pass it, so I just, if you had some insight as to why, I don't...
The, the theory is, to the extent the city goes outside the boundaries, uh, we would be under the jurisdiction of the PUC. The PUC has indicated they would entertain waiver of that jurisdiction, provided we undertake these terms.
Okay, so we want to do something, going forward, outside the city, whatever we do would be under PUC?
Correct. We apply for a certificate of power of convenience.
And to, and to, thank you.
Hey, Colerole? Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Bromley?
Yes.
Resolution on recreation grant closeout, is there a motion to adopt the resolution number five of 2013?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms., Ms. Thursday, please.
Resolution number five of 2013, resolution of the city council of the city of Titusville, approving and accepting the comprehensive recreation plan prepared for the city of Titusville in closing out Community Conservation Partnerships Grant Project, BRC, DAG, 15104.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Everyone's concerns been satisfied? I don't have a comment, I just, there were some questions last week, and...
Yes.
Your, your email didn't, it said it was helpful, but I didn't know which way it led you, so, looking forward to hearing that.
Yeah, I, uh, obviously, we all have our concern integrity in our votes and stuff like that, and I don't like voting for something when I don't have all the facts, and, uh, so graciously, Larry, our city manager, found the information that I needed, which, for a while, I believe, was displaced or whatever like that, so that came forth. Uh, it provided me a means of see whether the main bullet was, or ticked off, uh, in the report. Uh, I can say that we've had discussion, and some of us may not feel that the report is, is showing what we wanted, or, or evaluated some of the areas that we wished to have, but I look at the thing here, uh, the report does have some information, there are some areas which I consider maybe minimal, they could have gone into a little more detail. Uh, however, it is what it is, and if anything at all, the process of doing this, uh, brought us together because there was disparity among organizations and groups and stuff that were working together. So I look at this as, this, uh, became a tool that, uh, that was able to be negotiated amongst the parties, that we have something today, and so I think there is still some information in this report that we can glean and, and still learn from, however, we are past that point now with the new commission, and so, I'm satisfied.
I got the chance to review the R and P, for lack of a longer phrase, but, and, but I couldn't go back in my memory, and I thought the people of the ad hoc committee and the people of research could say if they'd kinda met that criteria, so...
See, this took place before my seat, and I wanted to make sure that I was voting properly.
Great.
Mr. Edelman, Mr. Bromley, does anyone want to add? I'll add in one, in just a second. No? Okay. Um, and I did not see the grant application, did anyone see that? I copied that, and that right there goes to show, um, or goes to show back where we were talking about, let's just say, other entities applying for grants on behalf of the city, and we don't happen to see those grants, this is very reason why I have concerns of us not getting copied, of getting copied on what they're applying for, because I never saw the grant application. Um, still, I'm going back to what I said earlier, I phoned Mr. Good today because I read the paper, and, and I can't, now, I don't remember exactly what it said, but it said something about that a city official didn't call him regarding any concerns, and so I contacted him again. I did call him, and, you know, during the phone call, I really think Mr. Good is, he's, he did his best. Um, I did tell him, I felt that the way, the, the way he proceeded was wrong, he should have contacted the board, that was part of the agreement, and he, and all I said to him today is, make sure, if you're ever faced with this again, don't, make sure you talk with every individual involved, every entity involved, whatever, because I feel that a report is not complete when you didn't get all the information from everyone, and so my opinion is a fire report, however, um, I know last week we commented, a few commented about the commission, the commit, we do have an awesome commission there, and I'm looking forward from today on, I'm just glad this has been done, and those sins of the past is done. So, moving on with this, I'm, I guess I'm as happy as I'm gonna be, I did my best for the community, I mean, so, anyway, um, no other comments or questions? Colerole? Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Bromley?
Yes.
All right, New Business, police contract, is there a motion to approve the extension of labor group in the city of Titusville, the city and the Titusville police officers effective January 1st of 2014 through December 31st of 2017? I'll make the motion. Second. Mrs. Thursday? I think you need to read most of it. Okay? Whereas the city and the police are parties to a 2012 labor agreement, which agreement
has a term from January 1, 2011 through December 31, 2013, and whereas the parties have entered into negotiations on an extension of the labor agreement and have reached an agreement on mutually satisfactory terms, which the parties desire to memorialize in this extension. A revised police salary schedule is attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference marked Exhibit A, 2014. The parties have agreed that the police shall receive a 2% salary increase each year during the term of this extension.
Questions, comments?
I wanna thank the, the officers and the work of, uh, Mr. May and Ross, I think this will be nice for your contract, and my parents.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Bromley?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
The event approval, is there a motion to approve the special event, the MDA boot day scheduled for August 9th, 2013?
Yeah, okay, Bill?
Bill?
Yeah, with pleasure, I'd like to second that.
All right, go on. And that is for August 9th. Questions or comments?
I'd just like to comment, I think it's fantastic of a fire department to participate in this, such a workable event for MDA.
Colerole? Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bromley?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Hey, Diana, I don't have that, there isn't one. There isn't? But are we still going on that?
No, it was just on the end, so I can follow, that's how you do it.
Okay. So, public participation. Okay, comments by council. This is great. Okay. I feel like something needs to say something there.
I do have a question.
Okay.
Are we going to have a work session really round early next month or not? Are we, are we, are we considering that?
Yes, we would play a little bit of that.
Do we have a date that we can set so they, the residents will be, how would you like to...
Is there, um, a date, the first, is there a date that you folks want for?
I guess we're all rolling somewhere, but maybe it's better to, uh, do it the second work session.
That's perfect.
And then we'd all be here for the first and remind everybody, if you say so now, that it is forgotten.
Is that good?
Another one.
Everybody's, okay, second work session will be held in the...
Yeah, we'll be doing it.
For, for, for...
Did I say the...
It's at, at the towers.
That's okay.
I'll go for it. Well, we gave one to airport one time, we did have one there one time.
We did have one there years ago.
Well, I think we should have a Smith made interaction in this.
I can't stand the smell of perm.
Oh, come on. Run wider to the left.
Get your nails painted.
All right, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Keith, is there a second? Bill? Colerole? Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
No, I'm just joking.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Bromley?
Yes.
Thank you, folks, for coming.